Special meeting of the Stanton City Council to order on May 4th, 2022 at 5:00 PM. We are waiting on three other council members, so we are going to go into recess so they can arrive and then we can go into a closed session. We're now on recess. All right, we're back from break and the first item, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I would like to amend our agenda. And I would like to say that it's a resolution that the Council of the city of Stanton, Virginia, to rescind its establishment of an Equity and Diversity Commission.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Yes.
Is your motion to amend the agenda to add that?
Yes, I'm sorry.
And do you, okay, and there is, you would need to amend that and then after that, there would be a closed meeting to go into the interview process.
Okay.
And then after that, you would consider the resolution.
Okay, all right. So I will, I'd like to amend the agenda to include a resolution to, to recall or to, what's my term I want to use? To rescind the Equity and Diversity Commission.
Okay, so a point of clarification, the motion on the floor is to go into a closed meeting for discussion and consideration of the prospective candidates to be interviewed for the Equity and Diversity Commission along with
Item number two.
Item number two, to rescind.
Right, right.
A resolution to, a consideration, discussion and consideration to rescind the Equity and Diversity Commission.
Correct, that seems to be.
That's the proper, okay.
So.
That seems to be Vice Mayor Robertson, you want to amend the agenda to add this item.
To add this item.
The interview.
After the interview, yes.
I think that's a really big mistake.
Okay, all right, well, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'm willing to second this because I'd like to have this discussion.
Okay, so there's a second on the floor, any further discussion?
I just think it's a really big mistake, I really do, because it's just going to cause a lot of commotion around something that should be black and white.
And I understand that, Terry.
I mean, I'm honest with you, you think the paper's bad now, you wait.
Yeah, I understand, but that's part of the process that why I'm doing it. Here's the paper.
So there are nine people who are going to show up here to be interviewed tonight for nothing? Nine citizens are going to show up.
If we, if we go that route, I'm making a motion, I'm making a motion, if we go that route, yes ma'am.
So we're going to take nine citizens' time to sift through interviews and then you're going to rescind, you're going to move to rescind Equity and Diversity Commission, is that, I understand?
You're hearing it correctly.
So.
Why can't we just go home?
Should we?
You know, this is, this is just, this is just really a very futile exercise. You know, I know one thing, if I took my time as a citizen and came in here to do an interview and found out about this afterwards, I would be an unhappy camper, to say the least, and.
Very pleasant.
So you're wanting to go ahead and go forth with the interviews and then?
Mr. Blair, if we go this route, do we have to interview?
Right now, you would have to interview, now, to Counselor Holmes' point, if, and again, not knowing kind of your thought process, but Counselor Holmes' point, somebody, if, if, well, it's sort of difficult, right, because you all need a substantive discussion about item two. But to Counselor Holmes' point, you could instead have the substantive discussion about, about this before you go into closed meeting. And if you voted to rescind, then just cancel the interviews for the evening. Or you can go ahead with the interviews right now and then take up this item after the interviews.
So in other words, they could be flipped?
If, if somebody wants to make, I, I think the proper procedure at this point, if somebody wants to quote unquote flip this, is to vote down Counselor Robertson's amendment to the agenda and then make a different motion to amend the agenda to include the resolution to rescind first before the interviews.
Could Vice Mayor Robertson?
Can I amend that?
Can he amend his own motion now that it's been second?
Not, not after it's been second.
Okay, all right. I would like to add that Mr. Holmes' point of having these people interviewed, they're already here, they're already coming. So flipping it is not going to change a thing. You know, I feel like when the dust settles, I'm not going to be the one that Stanton citizens are going to say was rude, racist, and stupid. But, but this at the minimum should be second and not ahead of the interviews, it's way too late for that. We could have had a special called meeting, you could have never voted for it, you know, but this is just rude for these people, it's just rude.
Okay, so we can go forth with the interviews and then have, would we have to, can we still discuss?
Vote my motion down.
All right, well, I need a point of clarification, so we can go forth with the interviews in a closed session, can we continue the conversation in a closed session concerning the resolution?
No ma'am.
We'd have to come out of the closed meeting and discuss that in a public setting?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor, there's a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Oh.
Mr. Holmes.
Oh.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Oh.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, and now, well, let's see.
You need a motion to go into closed session.
All right, but does he need to alter it though? It remains the same, we're good on that. I'm asking the question just as a point of clarification, so he can read the motion and it stays the same and then we can move forward.
Correct.
Just a point of clarification, so everyone is on the same page because we, it was a little fluid, obviously, from the beginning. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to enter a closed meeting for discussion, interviewing, and consideration of a prospective candidate for the Equity and Diversity Commission pursuant to Virginia Code Section
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Right, Counselor Claffey has second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Okay, our first interview begins in one minute. All right, we're good? Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into open session.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council reconvene in an open meeting and certify the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in a closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Counselor Claffey, is there a second?
A second, this is Terry Holmes.
Right, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Right, that moves us on to item number two, which is a discussion concerning a resolution to put aside the Equity and Diversity Commission, is that how you stated it? Okay.
And, yeah.
All right, I would look at you, Ms. Boeard, but I believe you're going to direct us to Vice Mayor Robertson.
The reason that I brought this up, which I felt was only the best course to go, and I thought about it all week, and to my esteemed colleague, and I will call you my esteemed colleague because you have been elected by the people to represent the citizens of Stanton for those, you know, to represent their side, whatever. But to use a word that has been used this week, what you did at the last meeting, Ms. Mead, was absolutely egregious in the max. And what it did is you, by doing so, you brought closed meeting information into the wide open public by so stating that the recommendations or the, what was out there in the, in the, for this commission, we didn't have any Jewish people, we didn't have anybody under $20,000, we didn't have any Hispanics or whatever, I mean, why do you do that, then, what that does, Brenda, is it absolutely, in my opinion, is it absolutely poisons the well? How can any citizens of Stanton think that this is an appropriate or a positive committee that has the truest, best sense of Stanton in mind if they, they didn't have the proper people on there? They just picked the people and it was, it was put out there as if the four, the majority did this. I will tell you point blank, none of the four of us, whether you believe me or not, none of the four of us talked before we chose the people that we thought were best for this committee. We didn't say, hey, Amy, what do you think? Steve, what do you, we didn't do that. We thought it was absolutely, that would, that would be horrendous to do. And I surely don't have any right to ask you what you thought your, what your best people were for the committee, and I don't expect you to have any right to ask me or Andrea or Terry. That's, that's his and mine and her, that's her deliberations, that's what she thinks is best. And that's the way it was. Leslie said that the way it was, I wish majority had been used, but the four, between, they all got at least four votes, I can assure you, not everybody that I wanted got on that list. But I felt I did have a pretty good rank. But who knows, those 17 could have been you, you, Carolyn, and Andrea, or vice versa, it could have been five, I don't know. But by you making that statement, in my opinion, you have poisoned the well and you have come to the fact that you, I think, have, have made this committee illegitimate, in my point of view, and as much as that hurts, because I really, really wanted this committee to go forward. And I, I don't know that it can in the truest sense, because I don't know that the citizens are going to say, that's a true committee. If I'm wrong, I apologize, but I don't think so, in my point of view. Madam Mayor.
Counselor Dull.
If I could offer a potential alternative, you may have a problem with Ms. Mead, she may have a problem with you, whatever. I don't want the citizens of Stanton to be hurt.
Amen.
Yep, I agree with that.
And so, as an alternative, just to kind of make sure there's no poison in the well or whatever, what if we review the other, other candidates and pick out, kind of using the same process, but I know we don't have any Jewish representation and we don't have any disability. So what if we agree, let's, let's add two people that come in the disability category to be interviewed and some, one person that's maybe Jewish to interview. And they might get on, they might not, but, but, well, that way that should make, take, take care of the problem or help with the problem anyway.
Amen.
Counselor Claffey.
I agree with that statement, but I just, I just want to point out that the integrity of the process is the most important thing here. I'm involved in the nominating committee and can we protect the integrity of our applicants? And I have reviewed all the information that's come to me, I have reacted to it. I think Leslie asked us to submit a list of our most desired people. I have no idea who anybody else picked. And everybody did so and submitted it, I believe. And I have no idea about whether you all did or not. But if we breach the confidentiality of this interview process, then I vote we start all over again. Because so far it's being tried in the press, he's here tonight. There's articles in the newspaper that claim that we are not giving a full interview process, we are not doing due diligence. I've done everything that was asked of me, I'm trying to make the most of it. I believe in the process I was given. And if we have that discussion, it should be done here. It should not be done in the newspaper with headlines that say, well, they didn't get a pick because they're not, you know, and they are questioning the validity of our process because it's being done in the newspaper. And I have a problem with that. If any of this confidential information that we interviewed these people tonight gets out in the newspaper, I say we have to fill it out.
Unfortunately.
You know what, I, I think I've heard a lot and not been given the opportunity to respond and I'd like to do that. First of all, I disclosed no confidential information about any specific candidate. I disclosed data about the candidates that, that made up the list of 17, so that's first. Second, we all agreed that we were all going to interview all the candidates.
No.
No, I don't think so.
No, that was from the beginning and then suddenly it evolved, it evolved.
No.
That wasn't voted on in a city council meeting. That change in the process was not voted on.
And I'm not aware of the fact that it was voted on, that we were all going to interview all.
Yes, it was, it certainly was. We, we took a vote and I'll go back and cite the minutes, I don't have them at my hand.
I'm not aware of that.
And third, third, Mr. Robertson is conflating my words with words of other people. If you're going to attribute something to me, please be more careful than what you do, thank you.
I thought I heard right, but, but Brenda.
We made a motion, I made a motion to discuss this issue in a closed session at the last city council meeting, that was my purpose. And we could have resolved some of these issues in the manner that Carolyn has just proposed. We could have corrected what was, what was, you know, the result of a process that, that turned, that, that turned into a skewed sample of folks that didn't represent disabled people, it didn't represent the people whose incomes are below the median in the city of Stanton. It, it was, it was, to me, if, if the process was good, we should have gotten more representation from those groups of people, so I believe the process was flawed. So I, I just, you know, in terms of breaching confidentiality, you know, and you speak of the nominations committee, has, you know, there, there's no transparency there. And you yourself, Mr. Claffey, said in, in a meeting recently that you didn't need to rationalize your decisions about who got nominated to what. That, that, and, and the mayor says, we should just trust the committee. Well, I think transparency means just that. That we, that, that we are able to have the discussions, if you want to, you know, a closed session like I proposed at the last city council meeting and the four of you declined to have that conversation. If we could have had that conversation then, you wouldn't have seen anything in the newspaper because we would have fixed this.
Okay.
Did you, did you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I mean, I think, obviously, I mean, you, you just said, Brenda, that you felt like the process was flawed.
Yes.
Carolyn's presented, you know, a possible solution.
Yes.
I will say that when you, when you made the motion to go into the closed session, you know, I mean, I hear what you're saying about we could have solved the problem, but at the time, I have to say, I wasn't really sure what we were going in there for. Because, you know, it was, it was relatively, you know, new, I think you did email us though, didn't you? Did you email us saying that you wanted to go into a closed session? I can't remember.
Yes.
And discuss.
And discuss, but, you know, the other thing is, I mean, I think we need to focus on now, we've, we've found ourselves where we've already interviewed a slate of people, I don't think it's right just to say we're going to, you know, scrap that and start new.
Absolutely.
So I think we do got to figure out how do we, you know, how do we fix this and go forward.
Maybe we just do it by interviewing them all, I mean, I, I tell you right now, it, it takes time and it's hard because all of us' schedules are really busy right now, but that would probably be the fairest way to do this, I know, and, and I mean, I know we all are hard for time.
Okay.
Terry, I, I would say in all honesty, we have followed the process that was put forward.
Well then, if we're going to do that, even if we're going to do that, then let's know, it's not 86 the, the project because, I mean, just don't kick it down.
I am somewhat.
If we can interview the other seven applicants, they deserve our attention.
They deserve our attention.
We need to add one more because this one person didn't show up or they were a no-show, so I would think that we should pick some, maybe if you could go through and see who the next person was.
We could, we could all submit a suggestion for one of the.
Or just go to the one with the next one on the list.
Or one, you know, or something and whoever got the most votes, just like we did this past.
That's a reasonable compromise and I'm willing to do that.
And one other thing.
But then let's stop the, the discussion, the last thing I want to say is, the most important job this council has to do right now, figure out what we're going to do about this courthouse. And I really don't want to appear to be a totally dysfunctional board if we've got a major issue downtown here. At this point, let's not be wasting our time.
Well, this isn't, this isn't wasting our time.
It's not, it's a very good process and let's keep it going and let's keep moving with it. Let's get these other seven applicants interviewed and what do you say, we, we all throw in another name in the hat?
Two names, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, if we do one each, that's seven more names.
Right, so you have next Thursday scheduled one, two, three, four, five, six, seven applicants, you have room for one more slot that night?
Yep.
Okay, because we have not been able to get hold of one of the applicants and then this other one, and so, okay, so we have one more slot available, but if you want to do two or three more, we're going to have to find some more time as a group.
Or do we, or can we start earlier?
Well, if, if folks can start before four next week.
I get off at one o'clock.
Get off at one, okay, so.
And we were going pretty good tonight.
If we start at three. If we, if we start.
At least that's 10, if I get off at one.
If we start at say three, then we could squeeze three more people in.
That's fine, do it.
Really, it was 10 minutes.
We noticed the interviews did not go as long as we had anticipated.
Yeah.
Correct.
And these won't be any different.
And so if we start at three o'clock, then we could add the, the one slot in the evening and add at least three more behind that.
So, so my question is, because it's too late for my brain to work, how many should each of us like recommend and then compile or, or what?
But how is that going to keep us from being right where we are today? No, I mean, that's the thing, if we all.
If it's limited to the categories that we're, we don't have representation.
Okay, so.
I'm like, if we can limit it to looking at those that identify as disability
Is that what we're doing?
Or identify as Jewish, something that we don't have, or low income.
Below the median.
Like, so if we each picked one from each or, I don't know, something?
I do want to state that it's my understanding that not only the names are considered confidential, but so is the data that is considered confidential, yes.
I don't think so.
Yes, that is my understanding, speaking with the legal counsel.
Well, I just like, I've been trying to say something for a few minutes, but, you know, you talk about things leaking out of this place, I mean, this place, our, our council has been like a, a ship with a hole in the bottom of it. It has leaked and leaked a whole, the whole time, the, the last two years and I mean, and it's been, I think it's probably been just about everybody, so I don't think.
I would challenge that, I think it was one common denominator, one particular council member, which I question.
I would, I would not.
No, no, I, I am, because I now question the trust of having that particular council member as a liaison for this committee, for this commission.
You know, I have a personal problem, knowing that you colluded with the Board of Supervisors.
I have not colluded with anyone, no, I have not, I have not colluded with anyone, that's why I support keeping the courthouse in Stanton. Let's bring it back, let's bring it back, let's bring it back, no, no, I'm talking about, I am talking about tonight with this particular issue. Also, not everybody was willing to answer all the questions, whether it be their income, whether it be their disability. Not everybody was willing to answer that, so we very well could have people we're interviewing that have a disability, that have a certain income level that we're not aware of. I am willing to include maybe two more candidates within the categories that you mentioned, Carolyn.
How many do we have time for?
So if we start at three, we can do a 3:15 to 3:30, 3:35 to 3:50, 3:55 to 4:10 because the first interview starts at 4:15, so we could add three, but plus we have the fourth slot to try to.
So we got four.
So four, but we need to try to reach out to the one, to the ones who didn't get back to us yet too.
Okay.
So three, I'm going to, I'm going to say at least, you know, three is possible.
Is everybody in agreement with three? With those categories?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And, and I think it's important to look at the categories that we don't have representation from. Because, you know, like several people said, you know, it's, it's thinking, believing that you're being seen, heard, and listened to. And if there's nobody like you on the commission, then, then you're not going to think that. So I think for that very reason, we need to just try to make an effort, it's not that hard, we had like, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's what we're doing, one from each, one of the three categories.
I've been, and I can assure you, Carolyn, I, I had a trans, I had a, I had two or three black, lesbian, I got a couple gays.
All we missed was disability and Jewish.
Well, actually, right, I, I actually did have one, actually, I didn't get all my people on it, so. So I'm, like I said, we followed the thing, that's just the way it ended up.
Yep, so now we'll just, if we just focus on that for three, if we have three, that's, that should get us some.
And like you said, I mean, we'll put them on there, they may or may not get on, well, once the scores come up, they do, they do, they don't, they don't.
Yep, yep.
So we're all in agreement to continue forward with the set interviews for next Thursday.
Yep.
We'll look at three more
Are you all going?
Within the categories that we do not have representation. We'll look at three more within the categories that we do not have representation, or appears that we do not have.
When can we start?
And if we could start.
Three o'clock?
Three. Three o'clock at everyone.
I'll be here at three.
Be here at three.
So are you all going to send me something or what? So you're going to send me three names?
Yep.
And then I'll compile that.
Just like before.
Just like before, and we'll go from there. Does that sound reasonable?
And three names meet at three o'clock on the twelve.
So there will not be a petition to put this aside. We're moving forward.
Okay, yeah, I'll withdraw that.
I think that's a great idea, because, you know, we would take and turn this into another sting bomb.
Well, and Terry, I'll be honest with you, you know, and and I know, Brenda, I'm not trying, but like you said.
Brenda's texting.
You said, you know, that if we had.
I'm not texting, I'm marking my calendar.
Okay.
Great, okay.
Well, it looks like texting.
I'm pretty suspicious.
Well, well, Carolyn, I'm going to get to this next thing. You know, when you said about, we didn't do it, we, you know, you wanted to go into closed meeting, you know, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whatever it was, I and among a few others were called the south end of a northbound mule. That, you want me to play you the tape?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
When it was, when you.
What do you mean, when I called you assholes?
Yeah, when we called us assholes. And then something about holding water, whatever it is, but.
Which could be a disability.
Well, I was just going to say that I will happily volunteer to let the press write about me because you can't make me mad.
Well, we certainly do not want this played out in the press, to Counselor Claffey's point, we we need.
And you can quote me on that.
Yeah, that art that article of the day, like, oh, gosh, here we go. So I will say, Brenda, I I've got one other thing that I would like to bring up, but I, you know, I, I'm kind of like the mayor. I, you know, having made those statements, I'm a little, I almost wish we could find another liaison, I'll be honest with you.
Well, that's up to you.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I I don't have that warm fuzzy, and I'm sorry.
And and that's fine, that's up to you, and I mean by you, I mean you four.
No, 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 no. That's separating the council.
It's still a vote of seven, it's our vote.
It's still seven votes.
But I, in all honesty, I, you know, like I said, I do consider you my esteemed colleague because you were voted. Well, I'm I'm calling you that, whatever, but I will make the motion just to make sure that I feel better, that I would like to see us replace you as liaison on this committee, simply because I don't think, because of what you divulged, and you're you're a veteran, you're a veteran colleague, you're a veteran council member, you know what's not supposed to get out there and what isn't. And it got out there because it's, like I said, it 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 made people feel a little uneasy, like, like, hey, they're they're, the the game is up, they've already got this decided. No, we didn't. So I will make that motion.
My question is, who who wants to be liaison?
I don't know, I know I can't.
I know, before we just, you know, jump in here, like, what harm can be done?
Is there anyone that would like to be considered as liaison?
I mean, I can't with my work schedule. I mean, I'd know that.
Counselor Holmes, I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to step forth and do it.
It's interesting that you're the one that brought it up, and you're the one.
Well, I brought it up, I brought it up because because of the distrust that has now been established.
What if we don't worry about the liaison?
Well, that we, right now, right now, we need to get the commission put forth, and we can, but.
We can always.
The vice mayor had mentioned that he'd like to make a motion, are you?
I I make that motion.
Why do we have to do that?
Do you want to make the motion tonight, or do you want to wait till it's established, the commission?
We could do that. We can make, wait till it's established.
Okay, all right.
I don't know why you want to.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, can I, how, can you all get your names to me really quickly?
Yep.
We're about a week away tomorrow.
Until you deny.
But today, Wednesday, that'd be great, and then we'll have to let, I'll let you all know, and then we'll let folks know. That'd be great, thank you.
All right. So should we make a motion to?
I'm moving adjourned.
We, since we're altering the process, so.
I don't know if we need to make a motion. You all don't need to make a formal motion to.
To alter the process? Okay, all right. So we're all agreed upon then, that we will add three more names, we'll provide them to Leslie no later than tomorrow, and we'll concentrate on the three areas concerning disability, income.